That's one of the big things that they can do.
What are you here for?
I'm just in the neighborhood.
I'm not saying anything on here that was like, "Hey, come visit us." I get a little nervous when I'm here.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Great.
I'm not going to wear it to, yeah. Grant to North Metro Publica. I don't know that.
You all may remove this from this over there. And it's over two doors.
It's funny, it's funny. We don't want people to say, "Yeah, I don't want to go there."
Yeah, yeah. I think before we, you guys.
I've got a brain.
Uh, change.
Kind of tattooed on there.
Um, I got the, for all of you who isn't trying to find.
Because we're very.
What they call.
So my wife.
I mean, it's just like.
Yeah.
If you are, I want to, I want to, I want to. Four, if you need to have a certain.
Yeah.
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 I got you.
Yeah.
No, that's.
We're probably very careful. Who are you? So they're not wanting to talk to Marshall there.
It's a long way.
It started down Cigwell.
It's all.
How many days are you?
But we didn't. We'll go together.
And three years.
I'm glad I got down Cigwell. I guess people have their strong ideas and what you were doing. So.
How are you? I'm well.
I'm really good. Your office, that's me. I had to run my back. I want some time to discuss your.
I put the gloves down. I love it. It's hard. I don't know. Yes, I know.
It's so funny. You're.
Yeah. I mentioned I was like, you know, I was like. I get your, okay.
Well, he didn't know. We're saying.
Yeah, but I made, I got a message. Maybe you're.
I'm.
I saw that in, uh, in your own news.
It's company. So we might as well. Because we're done being difficult outside of our state. We couldn't talk loud. We're running more conservative. You didn't get heard. You didn't get, you didn't involve that person. I'm getting other things. You know that too. Because people, my husband's doing very well. They're telling. So he's around.
The shower.
I'm feeling. We're at other ends of the house. We're still. You know, and so, you know, the first time I went to his house.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. It was. The funeral party. And then he came. I have to. I mean. There's never a piece of you that was just constantly talking. Constantly.
The server was down.
They're very much. We're not. I had, I had a great day of residence. Very. Already there.
Uh, well, neither of us actually. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I'd rather have things down.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to.
It is, it's a lot of fun. But, yeah, it's gonna be interesting because I see so.
Yeah, it's working out. I just picked her. So I'll have to check.
Someone has. My husband's.
I'm gonna read forward.
It's very disturbing. To be heard. It's bad. We're all. I've been. Because we're done being difficult outside of our state. We couldn't talk loud. We're running more conservative. You didn't get heard. You didn't get, you didn't involve that person. So I'm getting other things. You know that too. Because people, my husband's doing very well. They're telling. So he's sitting around.
The shower.
I'm feeling. We're at other ends of the house. We're still. You know, and so, you know, the first time I went to his house.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. It was. The funeral party. And then he came. I have to. I mean. There's never a piece of you that was just constantly talking. Constantly.
The server was down.
They're very much. We're not. I had, I had a great day of residence. Very. Already there.
Uh, well, I needed to. Yeah, I see. Should I do something?
That's what I'm thinking. I'm glad I had things down.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to.
It is, it's a lot of fun. But, yeah, it's gonna be interesting because I see so.
Yeah, it's working out. I just picked her. So I'll have to check.
Someone has. My husband's.
I'm gonna read forward.
It's very. There's still options. I've gotten it. It would be a great.
Yes.
Maybe I'm.
Now, you don't have.
Um, he's, he's. I thought that would be a great. Yeah.
It'd just be like, uh.
He doesn't have any.
Yeah. I had one. I'm able to read.
Yeah.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
All right, I have maybe an easy question for you.
All right.
When we incorporated as the city of Milton, would we have assumed all the obligations of Fulton County from a contract standpoint? And more specifically, any contract that Fulton County would have had with GDOT regarding maintenance or signals or anything like that?
Of roads up here?
Mm-hmm.
Probably. It's probably about a ninety percent chance that that's a, is that good or bad?
Uh, doesn't help us. Our position is gonna be, we don't want them. They're, they're, they're saying, "Hey, Fulton County maintains them, you need to maintain them." Like, yeah, overnight shit. Do not.
You know, I'd have to look at the charter. I mean, the charter can spell that out specifically. If it ain't in the charter, it ain't ours. So I won't know.
Charter would spell out language.
We would spell out in general language whether or not, you know, like it's spelled out, we took overall our ordinances. I mean, no, the legislation varies. There is.
So it says somewhere there's a three sick over obligations from Fulton County for contract services.
It's considered your geographic area, yeah. Exactly. If it's not in there, then it's not.
Okay.
Wait a minute. How are you, sir?
I'm well, how are you?
Good. Good.
I ask a question.
Yes.
Uh, we are entering into an agreement to receive funds through a third-party fiscal agent.
I just responded to. For our first day.
Here.
North Metro Miracle League is our fiscal agent.
How are you?
Yeah. So that summer file a little bit.
This is something that came to me today that said we need to.
I can't, yeah. Oh, did you get some?
Is Chris okay to sign this? There's a subcontractor affidavit and then there is a contractor affidavit.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But it just can't, but Chris can execute it? Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Wow. You got the extra? I mean, that's good stuff right there. What for?
Oh, yeah. So he signed it? Oh, I'm glad. Oh.
You got scorched. Okay. Now, you, you seem like you're.
I was looking at your names and, and all of a sudden I woke up and my face was kind of just, so. I was. 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 He's. 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 He's.
Did you go out and lay out with just out in lotion on?
It's probably a different sun.
Yeah, it is, it is. It's the angle of the earth.
It's a different, that's a different sun.
When, when I get. I probably just.
Right.
Plus, you know, my mom was, was diagnosed with melon. I didn't. I didn't. I was really avoidant. That's what I get.
That's great.
That's what I get. I will say that's what she is. She shouldn't have wanted to. She said, "Of course, after, you know, the sun never shines." She had a brother.
That's weird. That's, that's strange to me.
She had a birthmark.
We don't need to get it out.
Oh, okay.
Hang, we're six oh three.
Yeah. It's all. It's all perfect.
Yeah, we're six oh three.
You can sign.
I can sign those.
Yeah, you can sign them.
That's for.
Yeah.
That's just for whoever your staff attorney's gonna be. Unless it looks so cool, you just wanna come hang with.
Are you gonna be down here? Are you gonna be down?
Yeah.
I might do it.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's like, talk about. Good stuff, man. Talk about, yeah. Hello, Lynn.
Can I? How was it?
Yes.
Can I announce about your.
Oh, heck, yeah, you can. Here.
Do you wanna do that?
No. I want you to do it.
You got it?
I just printed it off so I could give it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, heck, that's all you. You're doing this right there. Nothing else on the agenda, neither than good stuff.
David, are we good? I already knew you.
We're ready. What?
I just think it's funny. Replacement, replacement, replacement. Same guy. I just think that's funny.
Are you gonna come?
I may, I'm gonna send somebody.
It'll be fun. Come. We're freshmen. Thank you.
Very cool. I'll do need.
Ready to go? Before we start, I'd like to welcome Wayne Cook from Vision Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation.
Amen. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day. Thank God, just the privilege we have to live in such a wonderful country, especially, Lord, just a beautiful area of Georgia that we live in. We thank you for this day and the blessings that you've given to us, Lord. I pray right now, Lord, for the mayor, Lord, all the ones who serve on the city council here, that you bless each and every one individually, or bless their homes, their work. Lord, I pray that you would bless them with wisdom on how to run and govern this city. And we pray for the decisions that are made here tonight, Lord, that above all, that you would receive honor and glory out of, out of that. I pray that we wouldn't be selfish in our decision-making, or all the things that are on docket here tonight, Lord, that you would just have your will and way. And above all, Lord, we thank you for the Lord Jesus Christ, and how you sent him, Lord, to pay away, though we can have a clear path to heaven. And again, like, God, we thank you for this day, and, Lord, for all these people here. Bless them, bless their homes, bless the government here in the city of Milton. In your name, we ask all these things. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, February twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the February twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have thirty seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Burkewitt is traveling and excused. And Councilmember Joe Longory is also traveling on business and excused. Councilmember Alan Tartz.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just wanna thank everybody for being here tonight. Got a couple of special people that are in attendance tonight, and I'm gonna introduce one, and Chris is gonna introduce the other, but I'd like to introduce a gentleman by the name of Fusa Yoshiro. And Fusa is here from Japan. He's a professor at the Nagoya University. He's spending some time here in several of our cities, Johns Creek. He's gonna visit with Johns Creek tomorrow. He's been Sandy Springs. He's spent some time here talking with Chris and staff, and then I spent some time with him today. And he's basically studying some of our municipalities, our, our privatization model where we're outsourcing some of our services and whatnot, and looking at our municipal form. We also talked about our role and our charter as a mayor and council members and whatnot. So just wanna welcome here, here to Milton. He's gonna stick around to the council meeting tonight, and after the meeting, if, if any of you council members have a chance, wanna introduce yourself, I'm sure he would love to talk to you. So thank you for being here. I've enjoyed spending some time with you. And Chris, if you wanna go ahead?
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, I'm also happy tonight to introduce to you a wonderful lady who has spent some time with our, with our, our senior team doing some training. Felissa Logan is with us tonight. She is the Director of Leadership Development with the International City and County Management Association. Felissa trains all over the United States in executive development and emerging leaders and career developments and all that. Just, just a wealth of information. She uniquely was one of the first, first-class of women to be admitted into the University of Virginia in Charlottesville, where she received a couple of degrees. And she spent four hours with us this morning. Her main office is in Washington, DC, a couple of blocks away from the Capitol. She also resides in, oh, gosh, Felissa, help me out, you're in Virginia.
Virginia.
Richmond. Richmond, that's where it is. So she, too, is with us today. We had a wonderful training session this morning, and maybe this is a very, very short meeting, so if she sticks with us through to the end, if you have any questions for her, she'll be happy to answer them, or if we get the staff reports, maybe she can give just a thirty-second update as to what we did today. It's great to have those two people with us.
And I'd just like to add that I enjoyed speaking with her also, and she was very, and worked with a lot of different governments, and was very, very complimentary of not only Milton, our area, what the city looks like, but also our city staff. Just had high remarks of our, our whole structure and all of our city staff. So anyways, just, she'd make all of us proud, but thank you for passing on those, those nice words. Was talking about how driving around Milton last night reminded her of, of Virginia. So I think that's a good, nice compliment, so. All right. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number eleven zero two nine.
Okay, is there any items to be considered? I don't think so. So do I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the meeting agenda. Agenda item, item number one-one dash zero two niner.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Will city clerk please sound those items?
Our first item is approval of the February seventh, two thousand and eleven, regular council meeting minutes. Agenda item number eleven zero thirty. Next, we have approval of closing documents for the purpose of real property located at one-three-six-nine-zero, Highway nine, Milton, Georgia, between the city of Milton and Wooden Cross Investments, LLC. Agenda item number eleven zero three one. Next, approval of a facility use agreement between the city of Milton and Fulton County Board of Education for the use of Birmingham Falls Elementary School. Agenda item number eleven zero three two. Fourth, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milton and Fulton County Board of Education for the use of Cogburn Woods Elementary School. Agenda item number eleven zero three three. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milton and Fulton County Board of Education for the use of Hopewell Middle School. Agenda item number eleven zero three four. Sixth, we have approval of a revised fee schedule for the city of Milton Parks and Recreation Department. Agenda item number eleven zero three five. Next, we have approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Milton and North Metro Miracle League, Inc., for the fresh grant application. Agenda item number eleven zero three six. And finally, we have approval of a lease agreement with Georgia Power for the acceptance of streetlights in the Crab Apple Hills subdivision. Agenda item number eleven zero three seven.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I put forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated by our city clerk.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. No items under reports and presentations. First presentation, public hearings, zoning agenda, unfinished business. So we're gonna move on to new business, and just for, for those here tonight, this is a very short meeting, so. Anyways, will the city clerk please sound the first item?
The first item is approval of a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve the submission of a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Program. This is agenda item number eleven zero three eight. Mr. Matt Marianna.
Good evening. This is another grant application to the AFG program through FEMA, Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program. This is actually for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant, which is different than the SAFER grant, which we've hired firefighters under already, and the, the general AFG grant that we've got funding for last year to fund station improvements. This one will be specifically for public education and fire marshal kind of duties. Public education and investigation and inspections is what this one is oriented toward. This grant request would include forty-eight thousand dollars, approximately forty-eight thousand dollars, for purchasing a fire safety trailer, which, if you've been at any kind of public events in Alpharetta or surrounding jurisdictions, they'll actually have a trailer that they can pull to schools and, and public events that simulate smoke and fire and smoke alarms to teach kids how to escape from houses. We get often, we often get requests for this, and we're dependent on surrounding jurisdictions to be able to loan them, to, to loan theirs to us, to bring this important public education prop to the, mostly the children in the, in the community. And then a smaller portion of this grant request would go to fund training additional investigators in the fire department, so I am not the only person on call to investigate fires. Again, the total is forty-eight thousand dollars, and that carries approximately fifty-five hundred dollar match for the city.
Okay. Any questions for Matt on this, from council?
I could supplement just real quick, before you start to ask your questions. We anticipate that if that match is required, it would be something that we could fund in the fiscal twelve budget. If, in fact, that match is required in this fiscal year, the fiscal year eleven, I'm confident that the return on our investment is such that we can find fifty-five hundred dollars. So funding, I don't find to be an issue with this request.
Okay. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor.
And Bill, and I think Karen may have one.
That obviously answered, I think, probably several of our questions, was do we have the funding for that match?
Just telepathic there for a second.
Just to confirm, prior to being, being a city, there had been a fire safety house that we used to utilize from Fulton County. Is that correct?
I am unsure. I'm sure Fulton County has one somewhere in the system.
Yeah, there, there used to be one available to the area, but obviously, when we became a city, that opportunity went away, and I was just gonna make the comment that it is indeed extremely helpful from an educational perspective, and it can save lives. So I just support your efforts in pursuing that grant and appreciate it, because I know that the community has benefited in the past from that, if we're lucky enough to get those funds.
Okay. Karen and then Bill.
I just had one quick question. When will we know whether or not we have been awarded the grant?
It all depends on, on how quickly they, they process through the, the number of cities, the amount of funding that they have, how many applications they get. It can take anywhere from six months to actually a year later. Sometimes these grants, they're awarding right before the new grant cycle opens up. So it, it, there's a lot of factors that come into play on that, but it'll, it should be closer to, toward the end of the summer if, if we do get awarded.
Bill?
We continue to get more pieces of equipment over time. Where are we gonna store this trailer once we get?
Um, we, we have some base space that's still available.
jurisdictions, they'll actually have a trailer that they can pull to schools and public events that simulate smoke and fire and smoke alarms to teach kids how to escape from houses. We get often, we often get requests for this, and we're dependent on surrounding jurisdictions to be able to loan them, to loan theirs to us, to bring this important public education prop to the, mostly the children in the, in the community. And then a smaller portion of this grant request would go to fund training additional investigators in the fire department, so I am not the only person on call to investigate fires. Again, the total is $48,000, and that carries approximately $5,500 match for the city.
Okay. So, any questions for Matt on this, from council?
I could supplement just real quick before you start to ask your questions. We anticipate that if that match is required, it would be something that we could fund in the fiscal '12 budget. If, in fact, that match is required in this fiscal year, the fiscal year '11, I'm confident that the return on our investment is such that we can find $5,500. So, funding I don't find to be an issue with this request.
Okay. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor.
And Bill, and I think Karen may have one.
That obviously answered, I think, probably several of our questions, was do we have the funding for that map?
Just telepathic there for a second.
Just to confirm, prior to being a city, there had been a fire safety house that we used to utilize from Fulton County. Is that correct?
I am unsure. I'm sure Fulton County has one somewhere in their system.
Yeah, there, there used to be one available to the area, but obviously when we became a city, that opportunity went away, and I was just going to make the comment that it is indeed extremely helpful from an educational perspective, and it can save lives. So, I just support your efforts in pursuing that grant and appreciate it, because I know that the community has benefited in the past from that, if we're lucky enough to get those funds.
Okay. Karen and then Bill.
I just had one quick question. When will we know whether or not we have been awarded the grant?
It all depends on, on how quickly they, they process through the, the number of cities, the amount of funding that they have, how many applications they get. It can take anywhere from six months to actually a year later. Sometimes these grants they're awarding right before the new grant cycle opens up. So, it, it, there's a lot of factors that come into play on that, but it'll, it should be closer to, toward the end of the summer if, if we do get awarded.
Bill?
We continue to get more pieces of equipment over time. Where are we going to store this trailer once we begin?
Um, we, we have some base space that's still available. It's starting to get full in some, some of our, some of our locations. I'm sure that we can find some space by rearranging some stuff to, to place this.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
I put forward a motion to approve, agenda item number 11-038.
Second motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey. I have a second by Councilmember Lusk. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, or all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, well, city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of a resolution allowing the City of Milton to receive funding through the fresh grant utilizing North Metro Miracle League, Inc. as a fiscal agent. This is agenda item number 11-039. Ms. Cindy Benacci.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This grant is specifically for supporting our Camp Joyful Souls, which is one of our newest recreation programs. It is a, a camp, a summer camp for children with mild disabilities, very similar to the Camp Happy Hearts program that's been offered in Alpharetta for the past 15 or so years. The City of Alpharetta offers the camp for ages six to 12. We're going to offer it for ages 12 to 18. We recently became aware of this grant opportunity, did not think we were going to be able to get a, an application in by the deadline this year. Alpharetta was kind enough to reach out to us and include us in the grant application that they complete each year. So, the application will, will be both for the City of Alpharetta and the City of Milton using the North Metro Miracle League as our fiscal agent for the grant funds. So, this is a great opportunity for us to utilize these grant funds for this new program. We are still finalizing the grant application. We will finalize that tomorrow. It is due on Friday, but we should be requesting somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10,000 in grant funds.
Okay. Any questions on Karen?
Well, it looks like we're trying to reach a age group that's after the age group that Alpharetta does. Will there be some kind of reciprocity between the cities so that you're not going to have to pay any kind of out-of-city fees at either location?
Yes, there is. We have an agreement with Alpharetta that they will not charge Milton non-resident fees for Camp Happy Hearts, and we will in turn not charge non-resident fees for Camp Joyful Souls to Alpharetta residents.
Julie?
Um, quick question. Thank you, Mayor. One, just thank you. What a great extension of our parks and recreation opportunities. As we proceed with some of these camps, is there going to be an opportunity, you may have already pursued this, to have some of our youth within the community, you know, from the high schools, et cetera, that could serve, maybe even on a volunteer basis, obviously under the supervision of adults, but to help serve in some of these camps, to be, you know, a kind of a peer counselor or something? And if we haven't pursued that yet, I just would ask if we maybe give some consideration. It's a great chance for some of our other community members to help other folks, either that are in need or just that are younger.
Yes. We, our staff for this summer will be post-high school, so either recently graduated seniors or college-age or adult staff for the summer. After this first summer, after we've gone through it and have, have a summer under our belt, we will most likely institute a kind of a CIT program.
That'd be great.
To allow high school students to come and, and help out and get some training to work into a counselor-type role.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Bill? Is the $10,000 our portion of the application, or is that the total amount?
That's just the City of Milton. That's just, that's just our portion.
Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. And the $10,000 that we would receive, are there any matching funds required?
No, it's 100 percent.
All right. Any other questions?
I might have to beat a Dinkus and a Braver.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, agenda item number 11-039. Approval of a resolution allowing the City of Milton to receive funding through the fresh grant utilizing North Metro Miracle League, Inc. as a fiscal agent.
Second motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. We'll move on to reports. Is there anything that the council would like to report on tonight?
I can give a quick.
Julie?
Just very quickly, next week, as a part of the SAFER Routes to School program and grant that the city has pursued, I just wanted to let you know that some of the local schools, particularly Northwestern and Crab Apple Elementary, and hopefully Milton High School, will be reaching out, and there's a program next Wednesday, this, I believe that's the second of March, whereby they're having a collaborative event between those local schools to help encourage kids to walk to school. And it's just another great example of, of where we've been able to, to identify grants, et cetera, and really embrace the community. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, and that's next Wednesday morning.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right, well, I'll move on to staff reports.
Got a couple for you tonight, Mayor and Council. We're not going to keep you here long, though. I realize a couple of people want to get to the redistricting meeting tonight that starts at seven and upward. So, I'm checking my phone here. We're still good. We're going to start with good news. Actually, I've got good news tonight, but we're going to start with the best of the good news.
Best of the best.
I know, that, that made it sound like, yeah, we'll start with the good, and guess what's coming in a minute. But the best of the good news comes from Lynn tonight, so let me let her take it away, and then I'll, I'll ditch in a couple other things.
As many of you may remember, we applied for an LCI grant back earlier in the year, and I'm very pleased to publicly announce that we received that grant. It's a $100,000 grant for the Highway 9 corridor, so we are really excited to get that. That'll do a lot to help enhance our multimodal and pedestrian walkability in that area, so. And that's another partnership with Alpharetta, so as it looks, that seems to be one of the best ways to go on these grants.
Good deal.
Similar to Councilmember Lusk's question about the funding, is that $100,000 represent the total for both City of Alpharetta and ourselves, or is that a portion of?
That's the total grant from ARC.
Okay.
Our portion, originally we had asked for $120,000, and so our match was $30,000, so it's going to be a little less than that with them awarding the $100,000, but this should be very, very well set for our project.
Thank you.
One of two, actually. All right, can you top that? The recipients, which is a good thing in, in this whole region.
Wonderful.
Now, top that one, Chris.
I can't, but I'm going to just give you a couple of, well, I'll top it by saying we've had two staff members who have new daughters this week, so that's important. That's an easy one to top just about anything with. Jason's daughter, Tallulah Gray, was born in Brook, our court clerk, had a daughter, Ansley Elizabeth, so this week we are growing, not necessarily on internal staff, but maybe in our health insurance.
Of course, yeah.
We worked today on, on strategic plan, another session happened today. You will get your first update on where we are with respect to that progress on March the 14th. I just wanted to bring your attention to that. That's the work session in March. I do, if you have any interest in going to the ARC Create Awards Breakfast this year, I've got tickets to that if you want to venture over there. Thursday, March the 3rd, it's a seven to nine. I said venture over there, I think I should have said venture down there. It's in Atlanta, so if, if you have any interest in, in going with me or members of our staff to that awards breakfast, you are very welcome. Just please let me know. I need to get a list down there to them so that they know who's coming. We have, in fact, closed, and you ratified the documents tonight on the consent agenda with respect to the Highway 9 property, the 4.9, give or take acres, just south of Bethany Bend. That's a good thing for, for the city. Obviously, now we're in plans as to how that piece of property moves forward with both our needs plus the needs of the community we're working with, and really about as far as I want to go with it at this point, because there's, you're going to have to vote on it at some point, as will another elected body. I can tell you that the discussions are very forward, very promising with the Board of Education on some of those improvements that we had talked about, of bringing that high school site over to Highway 9. So, I'm comfortable in saying that's a very positive discussion. We'll also be coming back to you at some point in the reasonable future to, to talk about portions of that property and how we want to move forward with it. So, I'll leave it at that for, for tonight. Also want to show you, in, in front of your, in front of your place is a book that looks like a much bigger agenda. Do you have a book that says Mock City Council Meeting, Milton High School?
It's an envelope.
It's an envelope. Okay, you don't have the book quite yet, but you have an envelope. You might have seen the email, you may not have, but we are, we're set and ready to go March the 16th with the mock council meeting. What I would ask that you do is to take that book with you and keep it in a safe place. That means take it, don't lose it, because there's going to be a student that is representing you in that process is going to contact you, if they haven't already. I know mine has already contacted me, but the students will be reaching out here shortly.
We've got, we've got one here.
I'll give you the city manager.
Oh, come on up.
Nice job.
You get to help me make this presentation. Come on up. We need a chair.
I'll give you one.
Perfect.
All right, this is Parker Smith. Parker's going to be the city manager that, come on, Parker. All right, so Parker needs to go back to class tomorrow and tell the rest of his class that I'm the only one in the whole room that's heard from the person that's going to be them.
I've heard.
Oh, you have? Good. Okay. So, as y'all start to hear, please, please, please make the time to spend the necessary time with, with your student to help them understand your role. I mean, this is really designed to be a, a good educational opportunity, more so than just going through the motions, when we can put on a, on a fake council meeting and talk about things. This is more, this is more about the, more than the motions, this is how people, particularly young adults, can get engaged in their local government. So, this is a fairly comprehensive agenda. We built an agenda around the number of participants, the number of participants we had, items that we thought were going to be interesting for them to discuss, and really to kind of give the feel of a real, the real thing happening in here on March the 16th. I invite you all to attend. I'm happy to answer any questions. This has been a very rewarding thing to be a part of, and I got to thank Suti for really taking the bull by the horns and making this so. You know by seeing something this put together that I didn't do it, but I'm just kidding. But this is going to be a really great thing, really great thing. So, as your, as your colleague calls you, thank you for, for working with them. And this is Parker Smith. He's going to be the city manager, and you might as well get, just scoot on up to the mic, because, you know, this happens, sometimes you get put on the spot. So, at this point, ask the, say, Mayor and Council, do you have any questions I might answer?
Mayor and Council, do you have any questions I might answer?
What's a good pino? Maybe a steak?
I'd have to say the ziti.
For those of you that don't know, Parker and his family, they have a wine store, so.
Awesome. So, this is going to be fun over the next month to bring this to actual reality. So, thanks for your help in, in working with us.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Parker, do you, what, what sort of, kind of post-meeting analysis do you guys have to do for class? Because it's an AP class, isn't it?
I'm not actually sure, like, what the assignment's going to be about it. I just know that we're putting it on in March.
Okay. You guys are going to make sure that, that your public is aware that you're going to be here? You might want to make sure you invite your public, right?
I know, I know, for sure.
I think that would, I think we need to have some public in that audience.
I think we ought to be there.
I do, too.
Ask a bunch of questions.
I think we need some public comments and preparations.
I'm going to do some protest signs.
We're going to have a bunch of poor citizens and stuff.
Yeah, but it's wonderful. It's, it's really terrific, so thank you for having enough of an interest to step up and, one, take that AP class, but also to, to actually be here and to be involved, because it really does make a difference. So, spread the word. We'd like more young people involved. It's a good thing.
Wonderful. Okay, y'all, it's 6:33. Last thing I'd like to do, if, we'll put one more, one more person on the spot, because it's not every day that we have folks with us who have traveled in to work with our staff. I would like you all to at least hear Felissa say hi and maybe explain in 120 seconds what, what we did today, even, even longer than that.
Come on up, Felissa. I'd like you to have an opportunity to act with the council.
And Chris, if you don't mind, if Felissa, if, if he would like to.
Be happy to.
You know, Felissa, if you would like to, in a few minutes, if you would like to just, you know, mention anything about your, your visit here and what you, what you've learned, so just be thinking about that if, if you'd like to also.
Thank you so much.
Can you come right up to the? Yes, it's weird, since we stream this in as long as we have to record.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council members. What an amazing staff you really do have. I so appreciated Chris inviting me to come. I'm with the International City County Management Association. We have about 8,000 members around the world that do the kind of work that Chris does for you, and we very much believe in this democratic process and in leadership, and we understand that you can only move forward with your work if you have phenomenal staff who are competent, who are bright, who are committed, and who represent you in the best phase possible. I've been talking about this team of leadership that Chris works with as big brains, because you have people who are highly competent, highly committed, very detail-oriented and practical, and ready to serve. And that kind of commitment makes me so proud to have as members these kind of folks, and to be here tonight, to see your work, and to thank you for what you do, because this whole democratic process is really what we're all about. So, I thank you for that, and to be here, I'm very proud to be here. And I also don't know if you are aware that Chris has also accepted into a highly competitive leadership program run by ICMA. He's in his first year of the program, and so you'll see him graduate in another year. And so, that's a, that's a, we believe that's a big honor, and we're very pleased to have your support for him, and thank you for giving me a few words to be so pleased and proud as I can be of the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Chris, did you tell her that three years ago you never dreamed you would be a city manager?
Oh, we had that, yeah, we.
We were talking about that earlier.
You just never know what the future holds.
But she was.
Be careful what you ask for.
Again, she was very, very complimentary, so. And, and I told her, I said, you know, the neat thing for us is, we're not, you know, we're not strapped with 150 years of history of how we have to do it or the traditions, so. But I'd like to open it up to Felissa, if you'd like to say a few words and tell us about your visit here and what you think of Milton and Georgia.
Thank you. I, I don't know whether you know or not, the structural basis of the Japanese local government was set by the U. Americans, the GHQ of Makasa. And after over 60 years, we are beginning to reconsider or reexamine the, the, the construction or function of the local government.
Can I break in one second and ask you, or see if you'll tell our council members? Anyone want to take a guess at how many council members they have?
I'm going to guess a large number.
My population of my city have two million.
No, no, how many council members?
How many council members?
Does anyone want to guess?
20.
No. 75.
We have 75.
I bet that can be an unwieldy group.
And is, and is, and so it's, it doesn't matter what the municipality is, how large it is, you have 75 on every council?
And yes, and 75 council, all are full-time jobs.
Full-time.
And, and accept a very high salary.
That's definitely a difference.
Let me ask you, what was the longest meeting you've ever held?
I, I think the, the, one of the main reason of this many council member and the high salary is that they, they themselves can determine the number and the salary of themselves by ordinance. So, we, we should have a referendum, et cetera. But anyway, I could talk with the mayor or the city managers, and it's very indicative for us to reconsider our local government structures or functions. And I'm also very interested in the, your total outsourcing system. The financial situations of local government in our country also are very serious, so I think this system is very effective also in our countries. So, I can, I could get many suggestions from this day in this area, and I, I can, I could visit Sunday Spring and here, and tomorrow I go to Jones Creek, and this experience must be very suggestive to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. This is probably one of our shortest meetings, Parker.
May I make one comment?
Sure, Karen.
We got an invitation here for the windshield tour. Everybody should have gotten an envelope. I've actually been working with Find a Way Home on this tour, so I would just like to try to encourage those of us that are around to take the hour and a half to go on the tour and look at the, the housing services, especially for low-income housing that are offered in the North Fulton area, and they're going to provide lunch, so if you can take an hour and a half, I think it'd be a very educational thing, that's working with all the different agencies within the, the North Fulton area, once we decide exactly what North Fulton is, because they have different ideas, but.
Karen, where's that from? I mean, where's the, who's?
It is Tuesday, March 15th.
Oh, I'm saying, um.
You're the envelope, yeah, you're.
It was a little envelope that you should have gotten.
So, we have it tonight.
Yes, yeah, it should have gotten tonight, little envelope. Actually, hand-addressed envelope.
Thank you for doing that.
You didn't get it?
No.
Yes. And then we're going to be sending out an email also, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, that's going to conclude this meeting. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I move to adjourn the regular meeting of February 23rd to those.
Second, I have a second. Have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Tark. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you all.